I'd like to call a meeting to order, please name the pledge of allegiance. Okay pursuant to the open public meetings act, chapter 231, public laws of 1975, this meeting has been duly advertised as part of Chris issue of May 20th, 2015. All municipal clerks in the townships and boroughs within the regional high school district have to do the notified requirements for posting the notices as had been made. Need a motion for the organizational items? They are... One through six. Quick motion please. Second. Discussion. Seeing that, Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Essotola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Down minutes.
Minutes of approval. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing that, Mr. Boyd.
Mr. Essotola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Spankhauser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay communications, they're on file at board office. Now we come to the major reason for the meeting tonight. Mr. Sampson.
Hi, good evening everyone and welcome to our third student recognition of the year. As many of you know, after the fall season, after the winter season, and after the spring season, we recognize our student not just for their athletic endeavors, but certainly for co-curricular activities that really exemplify what we're all about here at the Freehold Regional High School District. We have a great number, we have about 135 students who will be recognized this evening. We'll call them up by building and what I would just like to ask everyone ahead of time is if you could please, I'll be patient and stay and support all of our students who are being recognized this evening, that would be truly appreciated. These young men and women have done some extraordinary things for the school district and sometimes the flow gets a little bit difficult, but we call building by building, but that's the most effective way that we can do it. So, I'd like to call Freehold High School to the podium to give a good evening. Come on down, Mr. Boyd.
I echo the words of Mr. Sampson, congratulate everyone here tonight. There's such a diversity of recognition that's going to take place tonight. Congratulate you for taking advantage of the opportunity that this district offers. It's pretty amazing when you hear all the different things students will have done, especially to the seniors. Here you are, a big milestone week for you, starting off this week, ending with graduation on Wednesday, and certainly a new chapter beginning for you. And, you know, I know that the district has given you both roots and wings. The first person I'd like to acknowledge from Freehold High School is Michael Gao. Michael, for the third year in a row, reached a finalist status in the USA Biology Olympiad. He spent two weeks at Purdue University with the top 20 biology students in the United States. The finalists were immersed in lectures and laboratory experiences and concluded with a three-hour theoretical exam and a six-hour practical exam. Michael will be attending Princeton in the fall with a focus in biology and economics. He is also the class of 2015 valedictorian. Is Michael here this evening? The next recipient, and I mentioned about diversity, Andrew Diaz has been an active member of the Freehold High School Dramatic Club for the last four years. He's performed in eight different shows. This year Andrew was nominated for the lead actor Basie for his portrayal of Edgar Allan Poe in the fall production of Shudderson: Tales of Poe. And he took home the supporting actor Basie for his portrayal of Uncle Fester in The Addams Family. It was absolutely fantastic. As an aside, the Freehold Regional High School District, where Mr. Sampson was there this evening, as well as a number of the other building principals, but what an evening of recognition it was for the Freehold Regional High School District. So... I had 17 at Freehold High School, Hal had a couple dozen too, so it was just a really special night and glad that we took home an actual Basie. Is Andrew here? As is coming up, he is going to continue to foster his passion for theater at Rowan, where he will major in technical theater and design. The third recipients of a medal this evening is not new to this whole process. She's been here a couple of different times this year. In 2013, First Lady Pat Christie started the Spirit of Heroes Scholarship Program to award graduating high school students who do positive work for the community. This year, in the state of New Jersey, there were 25 graduating seniors who each earned $5,000 scholarship to put toward their post-secondary education. It was highly competitive. Ellen Wu? Is Ellen here? Here she comes. Ellen Wu was one of these recipients. Her volunteer work was with a Chinese school in Marlborough, where every Saturday she specifically taught senior citizen, Chinese senior citizens who have come to this country recently to read and write. And then she shared with me that she didn't like the, she wasn't pleased with curriculum, so she developed her own curriculum and subsequent lesson plans. Ellen is the salutatorian of the class of 2015, and in the fall will be attending Northwestern University in the honors program of medical education. The next three awards are DECA awards. I'd like Ms. Halpin, the advisor, to come up here and be able to shake the hands of the recipients of these medals. The DECA program at Freehold has only been in place two years. Last year it was just getting off the ground, this year with Ms. Halpin's help, we did some pretty amazing things. Nick Kaufman, as a freshman, competed in the category of Principles of Marketing, received first place at states, and then went on to the DECA Nationals in Florida. Nick? Mackenzie Costa competed in restaurant and food marketing and placed and went on to compete as nationals. So, Mackenzie? Sean Preston competed in quick-serve restaurant, placed fifth at the state conference, and went on to nationals where he took first place on his second role play. So is Sean here. And I'd like our supervisor of extracurricular activities to continue with the two additional recipients.
Good evening everybody and congratulations to all the award recipients this evening. It's a tremendous accomplishment and you should all be very proud of yourselves because we are very proud of you. First, I'd like to call up our wrestling coach, Mr. Shepherd, so he could shake his wrestler, excuse me, his wrestler's hand. The first athlete I'm going to be calling up tonight, he was our district 21 champion at 113 pounds. He is also a 100-match winner. He's one of only five in the entire history of Freehold High School to win 100 matches, which if you know how long Freehold High School's been around, that's quite an accomplishment. He will continue his wrestling career at Ursinus College, Colin Monahan. This next medal goes out to a unique individual for a unique sport. It's a young lady that competes in a sport that's not offered here in the Freehold Regional High School District. As a matter of fact, it's probably not offered in many schools in the country, well, in this area anyway. She is a four-year participant in the US Equestrian High School Varsity Letter Program. She came to our administration team and petitioned them, she wrote a letter, she came, she did some research, came up with some criteria to prove herself worthy of receiving a varsity letter. Obviously, after reading the criteria and seeing how much time she puts in, she was awarded the first ever varsity letter in Freehold Regional High School District history in the sport of equestrian. She is also quite an accomplished artist. She, not only was her artwork featured in our State of the Schools presentation that we had a few weeks back, she is also, her artwork was also featured on the Hampton Classic Exhibitor Index. For those of you that do not know what that is, the Hampton Classic is, it's a program that is one of the largest and most prestigious horse shows in the entire country, and her work, her artwork, was featured on the cover of the actual program that they hand out. So it's quite an accomplishment. Since she earned her varsity letter, you could clap, that's good. Since she earned her varsity letter, I've had at least three or four different schools reach out to me and ask for the paperwork that she came up with, so they could award the same letter in their district. So she's kind of a trailblazer and we're very proud of her. She will be attending the University of Kentucky in the fall, and she has also been offered to transfer her sophomore year to Cornell University, Julianna Witt. And I just want to say, as we wrap up another school year, I just want to say thank you to all the athletes and the participants in the activities and DECA. You guys left an indelible mark on the Freehold Regional High School District, and we are thankful for having you as part of our programs, because you leave us memories that stay with us forever. Thank you very much and congratulations.
I'd like to call up representatives from Freehold Township High School.
Good evening. My name is Sean Curry, I'm one of the assistant principals at Freehold Township High School. Before we begin recognizing our students at Freehold Township High School, I'd like to thank our Board of Education and Central Office Administration for making tonight's award ceremony possible. We had a number of outstanding accomplishments at Freehold Township High School this spring we would like to recognize. We'll begin with a musical award who's presented to Margaret Baroka. Margaret was inducted into the All-State Women's Ensemble and the Paper Mill Playhouse Broadway Show Choir, which acts as ambassadors to Paper Mill Playhouse with an array of performance opportunities throughout the community and beyond. Congratulations, Margaret. The next several awards will be presented to our FFA members. If you don't know what FFA is, all the members of our Academy of Animal and Botanical Sciences are also members of FFA, which stands for Future Farmers of America. The first FFA award is presented to Samantha Blitzer. Samantha placed first in landscape design at the FFA State Convention. Samantha was required to complete a design based on the actual home and family scenario, then presented the design to industry professionals playing the role of the family. She had to use technical design drawing skills, extensive plant knowledge about native and drought-resistant plants, as well as principles of art. Samantha then had to present the design to demonstrate her public speaking and communication skills. Congratulations, Samantha. The next FFA member to be recognized is Alexandra Hager. Alexandra was selected as first place in the Chapter Award Challenge at the FFA State Convention. Alexandra served as chapter reporter and strived to bring greater awareness of our organization through traditional and 21st century communications. In addition to traditional letters and articles in a patch and in a school newspaper, Alexandra channeled the power of social media platforms, chapter hashtags, and created an FFA video parody of Taylor Swift's "Shake It Off." Congratulations, Alexandra. Our next FFA award recipient is Brenda Reyes. Brenda received the Harry Schneider Treasure of the Year Award at the FFA State Convention. Brenda was recognized for her impeccable record of accounts for her chapter and was honored as the most accurate, organized, and concise treasure in the state of New Jersey. Brenda will be moving on to the University of Delaware to study engineering in the fall. Congratulations, Brenda. Brenda, you're going to stay for the next award. The next FFA award is presented to three senior students who are recognized at the State FFA Convention as Garden State FFA Degree Recipients, which is an award that recognizes the culmination of four years of dedication to a student's respective program. Matthew Bonnet, Brenda Reyes, and Sidney Gavinelli earned and predictably invested at least $1,000 or worked at least 300 hours in excess of the scheduled class time. They also demonstrated leadership ability by performing procedures of parliamentary law, demonstrated public speaking abilities, and served their chapter, school, and community by participating in the planning and completion of a chapter program of activities. Congratulations. Our last FFA award is presented to six members who qualified to represent New Jersey at the National FFA Convention in Kentucky in October. Emily Carr, Alexandra Hager, Maria Martinez, Gustavo Sacramento, Karen Reyes, and Angela Costello were members of the Parliamentary Procedure Team who competed in a timed mock meeting, knowledge exam, and team problem-solving competition in order to demonstrate their understanding of the use of Robert's Rules of Order. Congratulations and good luck, guys. Our next award is presented to a student for academic excellence in world language. Nargis Musavi is being recognized as a National Latin Exam Gold Medal winner. Freehold Township High School students recently won medals in the National Latin Exam, which is administered to over 150,000 students annually at high schools and universities across the United States and several countries including Japan, Korea, and the United Kingdom. Freshman Nargis Musavi was the only student at Freehold Township High School to win his prestigious gold medal. Congratulations, Nargis. Our next award recipient is being honored for something that took place outside of the classroom, and that is Nina O'Hara, who was crowned Miss Monmouth County Outstanding Teen 2016 during the May 16 pageant. The Miss Outstanding Teen Organization is a sister organization to Miss America. Nina was judged on her interview skills, where questions ranged from her platform, scholastic achievements, and community service. Nina was also judged in talent, evening gown, and onstage questioning and physical fitness. As Miss Monmouth County Outstanding Teen 2016, Nina will compete for Miss New Jersey in the National Pageant and has the possibility of winning up to $50,000 in scholarships for her education. Congratulations, Nina. Our next award is presented to a student who received a congressional nomination and an appointment to attend the United States Merchant Marine Academy, which is one of five federal academies. Senior Carly Batista will be attending the University, I'm sorry, the United States Merchant Marine Academy on a full scholarship next fall. Congratulations, Carly. The next two awards are presented to students who earned their prestigious gold award in Girl Scouts. The gold award is the equivalent to the Eagle Scout and Boy Scouts and requires relentless dedication and character. The first Girl Scout Gold Award recipient is Mary Purcell. Mary created a debate team at St. Rose of Lima Middle School, where she coached the students every Monday for five months and organized a practice tournament. She then entered the team into the English-speaking Union Debate League, where they will continue to debate for years to come. Congratulations, Mary. Our next Girl Scout Gold Award recipient is Justine Nguyen. Justine's Gold Award project addressed the issue of financial difficulty in a way can affect one's health and lifestyle. Many times, when financial crisis occurs, nutrition becomes secondary, with the family choosing fast food because it's more affordable. Justine created a blog that she shared with such families explaining ways to save money while maintaining a healthy, enriching lifestyle. With the help of her advisors, she was able to provide helpful tips for simple and achievable strategies anyone could adopt to change the thinking of those going through such a crisis. Congratulations, Justine. Okay, congratulations to the two gold award recipients, and now I want to recognize an Eagle Scout from Freehold Township High School. And he did much more than just become an Eagle Scout this year, so I want to recognize him for that as well. Nicholas DeFranco received his Eagle Scout Award by completing a project at the First United Methodist Church in Farmingdale. He built an outside learning area for the parishioners' youth group. Nicholas is also to be commended though for his volunteer work for the employer support of the Guard and Reserve at Joint Base McGuire-Dix Lakers, which is a Department of Defense organization, where Nicholas was responsible for beautifying the outdoors for an employment event or assembling folders of information to distribute to returning veterans. Nicholas also received the President's Volunteer Service Award and a letter from the President of the United States. Nicholas will be attending Rowan University in the fall, where he'll study mechanical engineering. Congratulations, Nicholas. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our supervisor of extracurricular activities, Mr. McAvoy, who will be presenting our athletic awards.
All right, congrats to everyone so far. First up, can Mr. Weezy, Bobby, can you please come down for a second? Bobby here is a sophomore, and according to his coach Blanco for golf, he's an excellent example of what is good about athletics today. He carries himself on and off the golf course with respect, sportsmanship, and integrity. This past season, he qualified for the state sectional, finished second, then moved to the meet of champions, and he finished third. More importantly though, is that he was the first in the FRHSD golf tournament, so congrats again for a good season. He's only a sophomore, he'll be out for another two years. Joe Silverstone for baseball, he was just named first team allshore for baseball, and he had nine home runs this season, which broke our school record. And right now, he just signed actually the other day with Wagner, so congrats to Joe. All right, our two lacrosse players, first up is Billy Sasso. Billy was a four-year starter, a two-year captain for the lacrosse program. He was honored as first team A-North, first team allshore, player of the year A-North, MSG Varsity Honorable Mention, New Jersey All-State. He led the team in goals and second in assists. He will continue to play lacrosse at North College, so congrats to Billy Sasso. All right, next up is Mike O'Brien. Mike was a three-year starter and a team captain as a senior. He was honored as first team A-North, first team allshore, MSG Varsity Honorable Mention, New Jersey All-State. He is the leader of defense that was 11th in the state and third in the shore for goals against average. He will continue playing lacrosse at Sacred Heart University, so congrats to Mike. All right, and some of our track players. First up, we have Dominique Pantone. This past spring, track and field season, she won the Monmouth County Championship in the long jump and triple jump. She also won the Shore Conference Championship in the long jump and triple jump. She placed fourth at the Penn Relays in the triple jump. She won the NJSIAA Group Four State Championship in the long jump. She broke all the school district records in both the long jump and the triple jump. She broke the all-time Monmouth County record in the triple jump when she jumped over 40 feet at the national championship meet, placing third and becoming All-American in the event. She is headed to Duke University in the fall to continue her jumping and sprinting and academic career, so congrats to Dominique. All right, next up is Kira Roche. This past spring, track and field season, she won the Monmouth County Championship in both the 1600 meter and 3200 meter races. She won the Shore Conference Championship in the 3200 meter race. She won the Central Jersey Group Four State Sectional Championship in both the 1600 meter and 3200 meter races. And luckily, she's just a junior and she will be back for another terrific year next year. So congrats to Kira. We also had another one, Jake Koning. This past spring break, track and field season, he won the Monmouth County Championship in the 3200 meter run, running a time of nine minutes and 20 seconds. He is just a junior who will be returning for another year, so congrats to Jake. All right, next up, can I please have Naz Haynes and Jason and Kyle Sikowski and Tyree Wilson to come up here, please? So you guys can come up right now? Naz, right now, he is our past spring track and field season, he won the 400 meter Group Four State Championship. He is now the all-time school district record holder in the 400 meter dash. He is headed to UConn in the fall for a continuous academic and athletic career. He's part of our first team allshore. Jason and Kyle are right here, and finally, after four years, I can tell them apart. Actually, I think it was after two years I could. But this past spring, track and field season, they were named first team allshore members of the 4x400 meter relay team that plays fourth at the New Jersey Meet of Champions. They also qualified for the Meet of Champions as members of the 4x800 meter relay team that also competed at the national championship meet, so congrats to Jason and Kyle Sikowski. And lastly, Tyree Wilson. This past spring, track and field season, he was named first team allshore as a member of the 4x400 meter relay team that plays fourth at the New Jersey Meet of Champions. He is headed to Monmouth University in the fall to continue his athletic and academic career, so congrats to Tyree Wilson. Once again, congrats to everyone who has been recognized and will get recognized for the night, and congrats to any fathers out there for the last Father's Day, so congrats to them as well.
I'd like to call up representatives from Manalton High School.
Good evening, I'm Adam Angelozzi, I'm the principal of Manalton High School. To begin, I'd like to congratulate all the district medal recipients here tonight and their families for some pretty amazing accomplishments. Furthermore, without the support and guidance from our Board of Education, the Central Office Administration, and Mr. Sampson, many of the activities... Administration, and Mr. Sampson, many of the activities and accolades being recognized here this evening would not have been possible. Now, from Manalapan High School's recipients. First up, and I'm going to call your names early on, start to make your way down, and I think as we get medals, we'll be kind of wrapping up. First up, on Tuesday, May 27th, Abimanyu Chaudry, Winston Lee, and Alexander Yi. Start coming on down, guys. Competed in the finals of the Project Math Minds competition. Project Math Minds is a program run by Prudential and the Actuarial Foundation. These students presented their project titled, and you've got to listen carefully, "The Actuarial Evaluation for the National Earthquake Catastrophe Fund" to a panel of actuary judges at Prudential Financial Incorporated in Newark, New Jersey. This team of three high school juniors, won first place and a $5,000 scholarship. Second, at the New Jersey State Technology Students Association Conference, John Klitch, also a junior at Manalapan High School, finished first place in the Essays on Technology Division. Over 1,300 students from 54 high schools in New Jersey came together at TCNJ to compete in 36 STEM-based events during the conference, and this is the second time in his many years that John came home with a gold from the state TSA conference. John, don't go all the way back to your seat, sit like right up in there somewhere. Next, we had two students who became Merck Scholars recently. Koer Chen received the designation of a Merck Scholar for Chemistry, and Tarung Bibnathwala received the designation of a Merck Scholar for Physics. The Merck State Science Day Program provides for competition in the sciences between individual students and high schools around the state. Koer finished first place in the county and second place in the state of New Jersey overall, and Tarung finished first place in the county and third place in the state overall. Are either of those gentlemen with us? Nope, I'm getting head shakes, nope, they're not. Fourth up, a team of students which included Rishi Bomasani, Tarung Bibnathwala, Christopher Demerit, John Klitch, Eric Fang, Abimanyu Chaudry, and Thomas Cullen, competed in the American Association of Physics Teachers Physics Bowl Competition. This year, approximately 10,000 students competed, and this year, they opened up multiple divisions for China and Canada as well. This is the best year that Manalapan High School had in this competition. We finished first in Region Four as a team, first in New Jersey as a team, seventh nationally as a team, eighteenth internationally as a team, and Rishi Bomasani, remember, 10,000 competitors, finished second in the region, and he finished sixtieth internationally. Tarung Bibnathwala tied him with the score, but the tiebreaker, Tarung, finished 64th internationally. So congratulations. I will say that West Hollywood High School beat us in that competition, and I'm not happy about that. Make sure we're going after them. Is Callie Erickson here this evening? Yeah? Callie, come on down. Callie was honored by SAD and the DCH Teen Safe Driver Foundation as the 2015 Student of the Year for the entire East Coast. Callie was additionally awarded a $1,000 scholarship for this honor. Callie represented Manalapan High School at the SAD National Conference in Washington, DC last summer, and is currently serving as a member of the New Jersey State Board for SAD. Congratulations Callie. She also just got one of my principals' awards. She'll be, she's graduating this year. Now, I'm going to hand over the microphone to Mr. Hine, our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities.
Thank you, Dr. Angelozzi. To echo the sentiments of those who've come before me, I'd like to give a congratulatory, you know, high five to all of our seniors and juniors and freshmen sophomores out there, as well as the parents. Without your help, they never could have been where they are, so congratulations to all the recipients tonight. I have three young men I'd like to recognize for awards tonight, two of which are Eagle Scouts. Anthony Sillick, please come forward. Anthony's, Anthony's Eagle Scout project was the construction of a picnic shelter at Camp Sacagawea in Farmingdale, it's a Girl Scout camp. The shelter itself was 12 feet by 20 feet, and took roughly three days and several hundred man-hours to complete. Additionally, the project was also expanded to include the cleanup of debris that was a result of Superstorm Sandy. Congratulations Anthony. Our second Eagle Scout, Mr. Daniel Vois. Dan, come on forward. Dan's project brought together a number of members of the Manalapan community, including 43 members of our peer leadership classes, to repair many of the historical grave markers that marked grave sites at the old tenant cemetery located near the high school. Over 50 stones were straightened and put back into their intended locations, saving them for future generations to be able to be more easily studied and to preserve them. One of the oldest cemeteries, Monmouth County, some of the stones date back nearly three centuries. Congratulations. And last, but certainly not least, the next award goes to Jake Sadowitz. Jake couldn't be here tonight, he's a First Team Allshore. Oh, Jake is here tonight, all right, congratulations Jake, come on down. Jake is a First Team Allshore baseball player for us at the high school. He batted .430 this past season. He hit one of the furthest home runs I've ever seen, he actually put the home run into the lacrosse goal in the field behind the baseball field. And not only is he a good athlete, Jake is also very intelligent. He'll be attending University of Pennsylvania, which he's already early committed to, the Wharton School of Business. Congratulations Jake. Jake, congratulations everyone.
Thank you. I did read that actuary report on the earthquake, that was, I learned what I really didn't know about it, it was humbling. I'd like to now call up representatives from Coltsneck High School.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. I also would like to thank the Board of Education and the Superintendent for the opportunity to recognize our scholastic and our extracurricular achievements tonight. This really is one of those nights that we as administrators look forward to, it's a chance to really celebrate this, the accolades that so many of our students earn, and there's so many others, that we get an opportunity to recognize at other evenings, but this is a very special one because it brings the whole district together, it really shows how outstanding we are collectively as a district when you look at these six high schools together, what amazing things we're doing. I also would like to congratulate the administration from all of our sister schools on that note, and all of their honorees, everyone should certainly be very proud of what they've accomplished. I'm going to speak to a few awards, and then I'm going to have our Zika, Mr. Arnejo, speak to a few others. First, we do have three winners, well, three recognitions tonight with regards to music and band. So I'm going to first speak to Jack Gallagher. Jack, if you're here, come on down, and I'll finish reading as we go, come on up. Jack was, is now a member of Allshore Jazz Ensemble. Jack proved his talent and ability to juggle music and athletics this year, is accepted into the Allshore Jazz Band on the trumpet. His commitment to both his rowing team and his trumpet is a great accomplishment. Coltsneck Music is looking forward to see what Jack can do in his senior year next year, so congratulations Jack. Our second recognition is for Brian Schultes. Not sure if Brian made it tonight, Brian, are you here? I'm going to, you indulge me, I'm going to read anyway. Brian was recently accepted into the Allshore Symphonic Band. Brian played his way into the Allshore Symphonic Band in March, which really was not a surprise. He was a senior drum major for us this year and is a stellar trumpet player. Brian should be commended on his perseverance, talent, and ability to wear many hats and wear them well, and wish him luck at the University of Delaware. And our third recunee is actually, is David here, David Winograd, are you here? Come on up David. David is one of those, kind of one of those interesting situations, because David is actually not a Coltsneck High School student during the day, he's a student at my old stomping ground at High Technology High School, but David does participate with us and is an outstanding musician. As a freshman, David has accomplished a lion's share of attention. Not only did he earn a spot in the Allshore Symphonic Band this past spring, but also played in the Central Jersey Music Educators Region Two Intermediate Jazz Band, and also did a fine job for Coltsneck High School Music Department on tenor sax in many different ensembles and events, so we appreciate your participation with us David, congratulations. I'd like to call the following three gentlemen to come up and stand here next to me for the second part, Daniel Ellis, Kyle Cannon, and Matthew Valero. Come on down here and join me gentlemen. Now, the reason I'm having them stand here next to me is because they join the brotherhood that I am a part of as well, so I want to make sure that we fully give an opportunity to recognize as well as the other gentlemen tonight who were awarded their Eagle Scouts. These three gentlemen all received their Eagle Scouts this year, and just to give you a larger picture, and I think these guys certainly know how much I value the scouting program, being one of five brothers myself that are all Eagle Scouts, having two Eagle Scout sons and two Life Scouts that are on their way to Eagle, it's a pretty significant accomplishment, and one of those accomplishments that oftentimes stands out on a resume, or an interview, or a job application down the road, and I think these guys know that because of so many of the qualities that you have to exhibit in order to receive the Eagle Scout Award, which includes the earning of 21 merit badges, which in and of themselves are no piece of cake, I think, is that fair to say gentlemen? Yeah? You have to hold a position of troop leadership at various times throughout, but certainly for the last at least six months as a Life Scout, and then it comes to the service project. This project has to benefit either a religious institution, or a school, or the community. There's a tremendous amount of fundraising that goes into it as well, as well as the fact that the Eagle Scout project, important to note, is not about the guys doing the projects themselves, it's about gathering volunteers, gathering help to lead them in the process of this project, and so some tremendous work that's out there, these gentlemen have worked really hard, and I'm very proud of all three of them, as I've spoken to each of them at some point about their work, and so proud of having them join the brotherhood with me and many others and the other gentlemen here this evening, so congratulations on your Eagle Scouts gentlemen. I wish I could say there was some kind of Eagle Scout theme song that we could sing at this moment, but there isn't that I'm aware of anyway. All right, at this point, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Arnejo, our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, who has a few additional recognitions for Coltsneck High School students.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. I have three awards to announce, three honorees to award. The first being Emma Pergola, not sure if Emma was able to make it tonight. Emma Pergola competed in DECA's advertising campaign where she had to write a 15-page report on how to improve advertising and increase overall sales for the Wawa Corporation. She reached out to the Wawa executives to research the business so that she can execute an effective plan. The student, Emma, she had to pitch these advertising ideas to a judge using visuals with advertising examples and a breakdown of associated costs. Among the 38 students in the state competition, Emma placed first. Subsequently, she went on to represent Coltsneck High School at the DECA Nationals in Orlando. The first award for district medals goes to Emma Pergola. The second award goes to an Allshore baseball player, Chris Murphy. I know Chris had a game tonight, not sure if he was able to make it. Chris, well Coltsneck High School had a very successful baseball season, finishing with a record of 21 wins and four losses. A big part of the success of that team can be attributed to Chris Murphy. He was 6-0 with two saves, and 77 strikeouts and 51 innings of work for the Cougars this spring. He was part of the 2014 Jersey Shore Carpenter Cup team that won the championship last year, and again, he earned a spot on the 2015 roster, and I believe they won tonight, so they'll be on to the championship game against a team from Philly. Against a team from Philly, so hopefully we have a bunch of players from the district on that team once they're ready. So the second award goes to Chris Murphy. The third award goes to Erica Kesselman, and I know Erica is here, so if Erica, you want to make your way up? Coltsneck High School head lacrosse coach Jill Hadfield said that not only is Erica an outstanding athlete, but she's also an outstanding student, leader, and role model. Erica worked hard every day, led a team through tough games. Anytime she was called on, Erica answered and provided the spark the team needed. This season, she became the school's all-time leader with 351 total career goals, and also the all-time leader in career points. She led the team this season with 119 goals, 54 assists, 128 draw controls, averaging 5.7 goals per game, 2.5 assists per game, giving her an average of 8.2 points per game. She will continue her career at Ohio State University in the fall where she earned an athletic scholarship. Congratulations to Erica Kesselman, the third. In closing, I'd like to echo the sentiments of Mr. Simon and my previous announcers. Congratulations to all the honorees, you should be very proud of yourselves, thank you very much.
I'd like to call up representatives from Howell High School.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeremy Brogman, I'm the proud principal at Howell High School. I'd like to also echo what the other principals and assistant principals and athletic directors and Zika's said on stage. I want to thank the Board of Education for their ongoing support, Mr. Sampson and our central administration. As you can tell, there's a lot of talent out here this evening, and Howell High School is going to be represented tonight as well. We are very proud of all of our athletes, as well as our activity members, band, choir, etc. I'd like to introduce two people to start out the evening, and these two young ladies did an unbelievable, unbelievable thing for Howell High School and for the community this past week. Real Aid for Life, those of you that don't know what that is, it's a fight for cancer, and we host Real Aid for Life at Howell High School on our grounds, it starts at 5:00 in the afternoon, it goes all the way through 5:00 AM in the morning, and the young ladies who planned this event started planning probably in September, and this year, we raised $86,000 for the American Cancer Society this year. I would like to note that last year, we raised $65,000, so these ladies were definitely go-getters, and increased by $20,000 this year. I'd like to call to the podium Chloe Craig and Riley Wilson.
And to announce the rest of the awards, our Supervisor of Extracurricular Activities, Mr. Pete Mehan.
Thank you, Mr. Brogman, ladies and gentlemen of the board and administrative team. First group I'm going to announce will be our TSA group. We went into the state competition extremely well this year. In first place, Animatronics, I have the team of Simus, Clava Vicious, and Dico Lorenzo. Please join us at the podium then. First place in career preparation, Megan Moore, please come up to the podium. I did not see Courtney check in, but I'm going to announce it anyway, first place, Courtney's here, Shemane? Nice job Courtney. First place, Desktop Publishing, Courtney Ortiz-Chat. In first place in structural engineering, team of Andrew Lowe and Marcos Velasco. In first place in structural engineering, team of Andrew Lowe and Marcos Velasco. The next group we would like to honor is our chorus. I would like, all of them are here, please join us at the podium. Lindsay Charron, Leah Sandow, David Sherman, Vincent DeSeno, Kate Lanigan, and Michael Olson. Would you please all join us at the podium? This year, Howell High School had six students accepted into the 2015 All-National Chorus, the highest in Howell history. Students had to score at a top 10% of New Jersey All-State Chorus to be eligible, then send in a videotape, resume, letters of recommendation, et cetera. Students auditioned with a piece of opera, sang along to Renaissance recording, passed difficult music literacy tests, and performed a battery of scales and exercises in order to be accepted into the program. I give you our National 2015 All-National Chorus. I'm not sure if any of you were at the last award ceremony, but this group, including another large group of students, were invited to the White House to say good for President and First Lady during their holiday concert, their holiday event, their holiday party down at the White House back in December. And I'd like to congratulate them. Next group I'd like to bring up, our boys lacrosse. If I could have Zach Hornstein and Mark Buannick, please join us at the podium. Mark was not here. If Mark was here, he would definitely know it. He's one of our attack men. He's about 6'4", 6'5". We actually had to get him a different helmet to fit his head this year. He is a force to be reckoned with, and yet, if you know the game of lacrosse, I do not understand how people would leave Mark wide open in front of the net. He's probably the biggest target out there. People would still leave him untouched and wide open. I'm going to talk about Zach before he walks away. Zach was our face-off guy this year. He's our mini. He faced off at about 84% all year. He was first-team Allshore. He was MVP of the All-Star Game, and Zach will be headed to Albany to try and do their face-offs for them next year. Congratulations, Zach, and good luck. And girls lacrosse, could I please have Tricia Gresko, Reese Parr, Jordan Chan join me at the podium? We also have one other student, Bailey McLavis. She cannot make it this evening, and it doesn't look like Reese was able to make it. Please join us here, ladies. Thank you, don't go anywhere. These young ladies, we had four of them this year, accepted into the U.S. Lacrosse Academic All-American Team. The first one I'm going to announce is Trish Gresko. Congratulations, Trish. Jordan Chan, this is her second time being accepted into the U.S. Lacrosse Academic All-American Team. One last student I'd like to bring up. I did not see her here. I'm not sure if she walked in or not. And that is a girls cross-country, Neve Hayes, who was nominated first-team Allshore. Neve, are you here? No, she's not. Congratulations, Neve. Guys, once again, thank you for coming. Congratulations to all the students, all the coaches, all the advisors who put in the time to make sure that we make this place such a great place in Freehold Regional District and thank you for bringing such honor here.
I'd like to call up Marlboro High School.
Thank you, guys. Welcome and good evening. I'd like to start off by, once again, thanking the Board of Education and Mr. Sampson for providing us this night to recognize the students here in this room. I'd also like to thank everyone for sticking around tonight to hear the people from Marlboro High School and their recognition. Also, I'd like to congratulate all the students here. I'm always simply amazed with what you're capable of doing. I just scratch my head, it's wow. It's really, really impressive. And at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Ryden to come up to acknowledge the wonderful students that I have here at Marlboro High School. Mr. Ryden.
Thank you, Mr. Boylan. Okay, we're going to get right off with our Rutgers Model Congress. I'd like to bring up Mr. Eric Yang, our advisor. Okay, Rutgers Model Congress, it is a government simulation in which the students take on roles and responsibilities of congressmen and develop and shape public policy. Six years ago, the club is formed by Mr. Yang's AP Government students that truly wanted to put their textbook knowledge into practice. Now, bear with me because there's 32 of them. I'm going to call them up and then I'm going to speak about each and every one of them in a paragraph that I have written. I'm just kidding. Alex Cubey, Amanda Malaro, come on. Blaine Hen, Brandon Buscanera, sorry, Brandon Goon, Brandon Hanley, Brandon Lau, Brian Moon, Gathy Fents, I'm going to mess that one up like I said I was going. Dean DeJour, Jamie Richards, John Deutsch, Josh Levy, Catherine Conway, Katie Sun, Kevin Silverstein, Ladea Dubey, Matt Hahn, Matthew Schneider, Max Rodenbois, Michael Hahn, Nicholas Roga Kim, Philip Lu, Lau, Seth Kent, Skylar Jager, Maddie Gramm, Nadine Jalani, Ben Rock, and the executive board, Arun Sharma, Megan Kelly, Noah Genovese Mister, Sahar Badra. Now, what our Rutgers Model Congress won. Marlboro High School won top prize, Best High School Delegation, which is an honor given to the highest performing high school in the entire competition. This honor is the second time in three years that our team has achieved this milestone. Now, out of our 32 students, Sahar Badra, Jamie Richards, and Brandon Hanley won the top-tier honor for Best Delegation in the entire competition. And I should mention, he volunteers his time to do this. Next, we also had a first-place winner for the 2015 Technology Students Association, Solomon Nichem, come on up. Solomon took first place for his card design and performance. Okay, we also, I know Andrew Nordy is not here because he is playing in the Carpenters' Cup. He is a baseball player from Marlboro High School. He was our number-one pitcher this year. He was selected as first-team Allshore for baseball, selected for the New Jersey State All-Star Game. He was also selected for the Carpenters' Cup. He's going to be continuing his baseball career at Radford University on a full scholarship. And lastly, I'd like to call Coach Ray Sibduski. Coach Sibduski is our track and field coach at Marlboro High School. And one of the hardest-working coaches we have in the building. Our girls I'd like to call up right now, Caitlin Hippolyte, Tara Ryan, Alicia Zal, Danielle Spano, Alexis Bordaloni, and LaBika Kazaa. Once they come up, I'm going to talk a little bit about that. Grab your medals and come on back. All right, Tara, Caitlin, Alicia, and Danielle. They're members of both our 4x100-meter relay and 4x200-meter relay that ran at Nationals and broke district records in both events. Tara and Danielle teamed with LaBika and Alexis to win the Monmouth County title in the 1600 sprint medley relay. In addition to all of the girls being named All-District, Danielle Spano, Danielle, was named first-team Allshore for sprints by the Asbury Park Press. Our senior Alexis Bordaloni will be running on scholarship next fall to the University of Maryland, Biltmore County, set the school record in the 1600-meter run and the 2000-meter steeplechase, was a member of several relay record performances. Alexis competed in the steeplechase at Nationals and won the Eastern States Championship in the steeplechase two weeks ago in New York. Not only are they good runners, they're pretty good academically. Alicia Zal was accepted to both the U.S. Naval Academy and West Point Leadership Programs. She just finished the Naval Academy and she's going to West Point... Denver. Denver, oh, that's nice. At some point. So congratulations to Alicia. And that concludes District Medals at Marlboro. Turn it over to Mr. Sampson.
That concludes the student recognition portion of the evening. Unless everyone wants to stay and watch some of the board business, which I know you're actively enthralled about, we will take a brief 30-second intermission. Mr. Moses, do not strike me at the podium, and we will reconvene in 30 seconds. Thank you, everyone, for coming out, especially of parents who are supporting their children. So just continuing with a little bit of the report from before, we have our graduation schedule for this Wednesday evening. This is the first year that we've staggered our graduation schedules, so we have three schools that will be graduating at 4:00 p.m. and three schools that will be graduating at 6:00 p.m. And we did that in an effort to really assist our parents of twins and triplets, which we have a great number in this blue district. So it was important for us to be able to stagger those graduation ceremonies, so that will occur this Wednesday. Our last day of school for faculty and staff is this Thursday. And then Monday and Tuesday of next week, we have a two-day administrative retreat scheduled at the board offices where we will focus upon our goal alignment for the remainder of the summer and in the planning portion for the 15-16 school year. The administrative team this year read 50 questions to ask oneself as a building leader as well as a book titled Start With Why by Simon Sinek, and that will be the focus of day one of the retreat. Day two of the retreat, as I mentioned earlier, will be focused really on making sure that our building-based goals are aligned to our district goals, are aligned to our individual administrative goals as we march forth for 15-16. So we're excited for June 29th and June 30th, and the year itself is obviously rapidly dwindling to a close. Concludes my report.
Okay, next up, we have four reports and seeing no more reports. We have participation. I think there was one person who signed up to speak.
Okay, for the agenda. One addendum, J17 motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education and the Freehold Regional Education Association for the period of July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2020.
Okay. I'm going to take the agenda in one shot. Motion for approval of Agenda H1 through L3.
Motion.
Second. Second. Okay, discussion. Seeing none. Mr. Boylan.
Mr. Acetola.
Yes.
Mr. Bruno.
Yes.
Ms. Canario.
Yes.
Mr. Corolo.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Kauzer.
Yes, except on H16, any appointments for Coltsnet High School football or soccer due to my son's involvement in those sports.
Mrs. Lavin.
Yes.
Mr. Messinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Ter.
Yes.
Mr. Moses.
Yes. Okay, that brings us to all business. Is there any all business? That's nice. No business?
So I'd like to ask Michelle England to stand. She's here. Michelle is going to be the new Assistant Principal at Howell High School. Michelle comes to us from Homedale High School where she has served as the Assistant Principal for the past three years there. Prior to that, she was a Dean of Discipline at Lacy Township. I spoke at length to the Homedale Superintendent who could not say enough positive things about Michelle. Michelle came through a three-round interview process as the unanimous top choice in all three rounds of that process. So we're happy to have you here, Michelle, and ready to get you started, and I'd like to formally welcome you aboard to Howell High School.
All right, that brings us to the new business. Any other new business? Except for Nothing Nothing Columbia and America? Okay, do we have a motion to agenda B?
Motion.
Second. All those who pay for it?
Hi.
So you say so, shall be written. Thank you for coming.